To call the November 2nd, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Murray.
Here.
Taftest.
Here.
Smithwick Ailey excused, Anderson excused, Barbaza, Burton.
Here.
And Badla. You have a quorum.
Are there any changes to the agenda? No objections to approving the agenda, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Any changes to the minutes? You really don't ever make any spelling errors. I always like try to catch them, but...
I haven't taken an English class since a freshman year of high school, so that's all because of John.
Thanks, John.
He has been my English teacher in the past three years.
No one else has any objections to approving the minutes from last meeting on October 5th. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. No presentations with prior notice, no public hearings, no unfinished business. But we do have some new business, PZ 2022-014, recommending approval of the Slycock Creek, Alaska subdivision, Moore Replat. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve resolution PZ 2022-014 recommending approval of the Slycock Creek, Alaska subdivision, Moore Replat.
Thanks. May we have a second? Thank you. Staff report, please.
A year ago, the city received the initial application to plat from Sekister Surveys Incorporated on behalf of the owners, Michael and Moore. On November, and this was on November 12th, 2021, so last year. The applicant requested the plat be withdrawn from the December 1st, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission's agenda due to changes on the plat. Sekister Surveys resubmitted the plat on September 26th of this year, and a final update to the submission was received on October 13th, 2022. The Moores own both lots, and the proposed preliminary plat intends to reconfigure the property that separates Lot 6 from Lot 7. That's lot that has 3075 Endicott Drive and 385 Endicott Drive. And then, I guess for note, Sonya Barbaza entered the... Thank you, welcome. This will account for a redistribution of .35 acres of land and will give the property owners a desired parcel that contains a shop, a pole barn, in addition to the existing single-family residential dwelling on 385. And this reconfiguration is if they elect to sell part of their land. The parcels are zoned rural residential as well as the surrounding parcels. And legal access to Lot 6 and Lot 7 are from Endicott Drive. Municipal water and sewer are not available, and DEC recommends a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Then that's her well and a septic system. The city's minimum lot size and rural residential zoning district coincide with that 40,000 square feet. And when we're looking at the the standards for the rural residential zoning district, the minimum lot size is met for both Lot 6A and Lot 7A of the replat. Minimum lot width, maximum lot coverage, maximum building height, as well as the yard setbacks, are also met for both lots. This replat would reconfigure Lot 6 and Lot 7. Lot 7 will be decreased by .35 acres, creating Lot 7A. Lot 6 would gain that .535 acres, excuse me. The proposed Lot 6A would contain the shop, the pole barn, and that currently resides on Lot 7. There were two notes that staff saw, and one is on the, wow, note number three of the plat. This note reads, "Front 10 feet adjacent to right-ofways and 20 feet within 5 feet of the side lot lines is a utility easement. No permanent structure shall be constructed or placed within a utility easement, which would interfere with the ability of a utility to use the easement." This utility easement is not depicted on the plat, however, staff believes that this easement, this utility easement is not necessary, that the utility easement of the rear yard is sufficient and that the right-ofway distance on Endicott Drive, it provides for the necessary access. Staff believes also an error was in the dimensions of the lots. So when we calculated, just based on the square footage listed, we believe that perhaps there's a discrepancy between the lot sizes. So that is going to be a condition of the recommendation on the resolution. Also, there is a labeling error, so it says 40,005.075 acres. We believe that should be square feet on the plat, so that's in Lot 7A Block 2. 24 notices were mailed on October 13th, 2022 to neighboring property owners within 300 feet. No comments have been received at this time. The plat was also circulated to city staff for review and comments, and none were received. So staff finds that the preliminary plat for the Slycocks Creek, Alaska subdivision, Moore Replat, that the preliminary plat meets the general standards of Sodatna Mucible Code and therefore recommends approval subject to the condition that the applicant and/or the surveyor shall correct the calculation and lot size label for Lot 7A Block 2. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for staff?
Commissioner Burton, looking at that rear utility easement, we have the, these adjacent lots, I'm just trying to, maybe it's in Figure 1. If we, where's the entryway, where's the access point for that rear utility easement?
So here is the parent plat. So this is the parent plat for the whole subdivision. Lot 6 and Lot 7 are right here, and that rear utility easement extends all the way from Catmyst Street.
So what was the, sorry, may I ask, what was the easement that you thought was unnecessary?
So how it states, and I'll zoom in on this so you can read it. So it's also plat note number three, and that's found on page 14. So how it reads is that the front 10 feet adjacent to the right-ofways, and so that what that means is, here's Endicott Drive, so it'd be the 10 feet right here towards the rear yard, so starting from Endicott Drive towards the rear yard. That would be an easement, and then there'd be an additional 20 feet within 5 feet of the side yard. So, and so here at the side yard, at these property lines, there would be an additional 20 feet, so the easement would, in essence, come along here for 10 feet and then jet in for 20 feet. And after John and I looked at this, we believed that that was unnecessary. Partially is that we believe Endicott Drive has the sufficient width to accommodate the utility easement.
I can add that it's probably also just a mistake on the surveyor's part that they left that plat note on from previous, previous plats, because as Jen indicated, there is the existing 10-foot utility easement on the back that provides those access to utilities. So we think it's probably just an error, and if it's not an error, it's not, probably not necessary. But either way, we want to call attention to the borough so that when they review it, they can clear that up.
And it was specifically a utility easement, not like a front yard and a side yard setback that we would require?
That's correct.
Thanks. My only other question for staff is, have there been similar reconfigurations on lots like this throughout the city, and if so, have there been any things that we should watch out for or recommend to keep the peace or to?
Well, the only, the only thing, I assume the utility is electricity and that's it, right? Because it doesn't have water and sewer. Is easement there for any of utilities that might be constructed in the future?
I believe it's, well, maybe we can zoom in, but I believe it's just a blanket utility easement that would allow any utilities located there. But it, like I say, the easement issue is not a condition of the resolution. It's simply a note in our staff report. And again, it's to call attention to the borough because there may be something that we don't know that is missing, that maybe the borough has a requirement of some sort that would still require that 10-foot easement to the front, but it just doesn't necessarily make sense to us that you'd have both a 10-foot in the back and a 10-foot in the front, when we're talking about an existing development that's already being served by utilities. So that, you know, adding an extra 10 feet of easement, if it were my land, I wouldn't want to grant an easement that wasn't necessary. I'd want to keep it myself, so just calling attention then.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, is that with the dogleg, the other, the second property, although owned by the same owner right now, would not have access to that utility easement in the configuration as proposed?
You are correct, yeah, yeah. What's, what's odd is, there's no, on the adjoining parcels, there's no easement on the adjoining parcels on the front, on the right-ofway. So you're absolutely right that that one parcel is disjointed from that utility easement, and maybe they'll have to grant some other type of easement across the dogleg parcel for their existing utilities.
That, I, that would be precisely why they might be requiring that, because that's the only way that the utility could access that front parcel now.
Right, good.
So it is necessary.
Aren't we asking the borough to not to require an easement in the front?
We're calling attention to it, basically saying, hey, you know, there's this plat note here for the front, there's an easement in the back. This isn't necessary.
That front easement wouldn't extend to the back. So what it says is that it's 10 feet from the front, and it's 20 feet, it just would jut in 20 feet.
Oh, it's not on the whole sideline?
No.
No.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense then.
Right, and if you look at Lot 8 to the north and Lot 5 to the south, there's, there's no utility easement on the right-ofway there. So there's no way for the utilities to get to the utility easement that they're granting on or proposing to grant on Endicott, unless they came down the right-ofway, which, which is fine. And, but in that case, then the utility easement's not necessary.
So right now, I mean, the, sorry, not to belabor this, but right now, the, the utility easement just has electrical lines, right?
We're not sure exactly what falls within those easements right now, whether it's gas, electric, or phone, or something else.
Well, I guess your point is like, we don't want to inhibit that front parcel's ability to connect to utilities.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that would be the concern, that in granting the replat, that as John said, that there be a condition that an easement, easement be granted across that property to get to the, to the landlocked property to easement. I don't know if that's the right language, but...
And maybe it's along that sideline between Lots 7 and 8, or?
The new Lot 7.
Yeah, the new Lot 7 has that type of...
Or new Lot 6, it's, excuse me, 6 is now the dogleg, correct?
Right, and then 7 is now the, the island that needs access on the back part of that side parcel right up there to get to the utility easement, or?
Yeah, I was gonna say, certainly, if you'd like, I, go ahead and make a motion to that effect recommending a condition be added that requires that, that easement.
Requires the property owner to, to provide an easement across Lot 6A, allowing Lot 7 to have access to utilities.
You wanna?
That was the motion.
A second. Did you get that, Jen? We can restate it.
All right, what I have is, provide an easement across Lot 6A to allow 7A access to utilities.
On the backside of the property.
On the backside of the property.
Shall I take a vote? All right, so this is a vote for a condition on the resolution to provide an easement across Lot 6A to allow Lot 7A access to utilities on the backside of the property. All right, Anderson, Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Taftest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey and Badla.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's see, there's no public, so no, no one wishing to speak. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any commissioner comments? Okay, all right, let's call for the vote for the main resolution.
All right. Taftest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey, Anderson, Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
And Chair Badla.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed.
All right, the next item of new business is Resolution PZ 2022-015, recommending approval of the Pace Pleasant, Pace's Pleasant Haven 2022 replat. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve, I'm sorry, yeah, resolution PZ 2022-015, a resolution recommending approval of Pace's Pleasant Haven 2022 replat.
May I have a second?
Murray, this is second.
Thanks. May we put out the staff report, please?
The plat was received on September 28th from Edge Survey on behalf of the owners of record Whistle Hill Loop. The proposed preliminary plat creates two parcels from three existing parcels. And this imagery, to take note, is that you had passed a resolution for recommendation to replat this lot right here. The borough had not at the point in time of, when I wrote the staff report, updated their, this, the GIS file, so this, there is a plat line, and that has been finalized. It just hadn't been updated in the system yet. So there, and I wasn't going to arbitrarily draw it in. So it's, it's right here, if you memory serve, so it's, it's gonna look like this, actually. So this plat line looks like this, so. So the proposed preliminary plat creates two parcels from three existing parcels. This is accomplished by combining two parcels, Lot 1A, Lot 15, and a portion of Lot 4 into a single new lot, which will be Lot 1B. Lot 4 is reduced in size and becomes Lot 4A. The parcels are zoned commercial, as are the surrounding parcels to the north, east, south, and west. A portion of the parcels to the north are also zoned rural residential. Lot 4 is vacant and has plans to develop a solar farm. Lot 15 is vacant with plans to develop a hydroponic farm and retail, as well as a structure that will contain personal services. Lot 1A is developed with an eating and drinking establishment, a coffee house, and a retail store. Future plans also include for Lot 1A to develop a B&amp;B. So that in Mucible Code 1710330 requires parking to be located on the same lot as the use. This proposed lot combination would negate the requirement for a cross-parking agreement and would comply with Sodatna Mucible Code. Legal access to proposed Lot 1B is from Whistle Hill Loop, as well as Turnbuckle Terrace and Pace's Boulevard. Legal access to Lot 4A would be from Pace's Boulevard, as well as John's Circle. All three lots are owned by the applicant and and meet the standards for the commercial district. The intent of the commercial district is to provide an area that is convenient, visually pleasing, contributes to the economic welfare of the community, and allows for a wide range of general business and other compatible uses. The proposed Lot 1B and 4A meet the minimum lot size, minimum lot width, maximum lot coverage, maximum building height, and the yard setbacks for the commercial district. So this plat is a redistribution of land from three parcels into two, and no exceptions are being requested. The plat was circulated to city staff for review and comments, no comments were received. 19 notices were mailed on October 6th, 2022 to neighboring property owners within 300 feet, and no comments have been received at this time. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Murray, I think the solar farm, you said it was going to be developed, but it has been developed, hasn't it? Or are, it's in the middle of it or something?
Right, it's, it's in the middle of being constructed.
Are there any other questions for staff? All right, there's no public, public hearing is open and closed. Are there any commissioner comments?
Seems pretty straightforward to me, so.
Yeah, and I suppose this should have been a question, the, is the reason for combining from three to two for any ease of construction, or is that not up to us to know?
Well, originally, when we had discussed with the owners about parking, we had stated that to be in compliance with our parking code, our off-street parking and loading code, that section needs to have the parking that serves the parcel to be located on that parcel unless you have a legally recorded cross-parking agreement. And what that would entail is for them to draft that up, and then that would carry between the land. It comes before you, at the planning and zoning, actually. You give it the blessing, and then it goes to the Kenai Recorder's office. So this is one way to be in compliance without having to go through that step. Additionally, as far as access goes, you know, the main access intended for this back parcel of development will be from the Whistle Hill Loop, and so then the access won't have to worry about that same agreement.
They'll also be able to, as Jen pointed out, with the access off Whistle Hill, they'll be able to address it, any future development as Whistle Hill, rather than Turnbuckle Terrace, which is, you know, plays into their, their development.
Yeah, are there any other commission comments?
Commissioner Murray, you know, right now, you know, they have, I guess, sufficient parking for most things, but if they're going to develop other parts of this by combining, they're going to rely on the existing parking, is that what I'm to understand? In, in, in reducing the number of lots?
No, our site plan review, when we look at parking needs, it's based on the building development, and so their parking needs expand as they increase their development. So with each square footage of retail space that increases, their parking needs increase. And so they plan to include a secondary parking space on that, the lot in the back that will be part of it. So they're expanding their parking.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I think it's time to call for the vote.
All right. Smithwick Ailey, Anderson, Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Taftest.
Yes.
And Chair Badla.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, there's, still nobody else on Zoom, right?
No one.
Okay. So let's get public comments without prior notice and no informational items, but we do have council member Dave Carey with us. Would you give us a report, Dave?
The council is thrilled with the reality that the community approved the fieldhouse. The bond issues for the school district, again, will also make a very significant improvement in terms of the delivery and quality of service educationally on both the staff and students. And so that, just want to say this was a very good election from the standpoint of the city. Obviously, we support whatever the people say, however, there are times when the people say is is more in harmony with what we see as the ongoing needs of the city, and so it's just, it was very nice. We're also aware that with the money coming through the federal government for infrastructure, and I've been to, I've been to Ancreed for some meetings there, but our staff has done wonderful stuff with them. There's going to be more things that will assist us, either directly or indirectly. One of the things that we're very aware of, and I'm sure each of you are aware of it as well, and, and that's going to be the issue of workforce development. Finding the people to do the work necessary. You know, it's one of these good news, bad news. Good news is a huge amount of funds available to improve the infrastructure that we need, and the quality of life will be enhanced by it. However, finding the people to do it will be very difficult. There needs to be a very conscientious and focused order of development of things. As much as possible, there needs to be an integration so that one, one project that would logically follow the next one in terms of staffing and it just could be very helpful in terms of building up and then building out these different projects, and so that wherever the different units of government can work together. One of the very first things that the city manager for Sodatna mentioned in her report after these things were approved was that the city will be working very much to look at how we can work together, so that again, we can hopefully get things done in the timeline that we wish. However, the main thing is to get them done adequately and appropriately, and to use the lowest number of funds that are needed, so we need to be efficient and effective. And so again, just that cooperation. In some areas of government, cooperating between units of government don't go off very well. They're not very open to it. We are very open to it. We know it's absolutely critically important. You know, it's a nice thing of being a small community, that we know that we depend on each other. Being a community that began as basically people coming up here and, and having land that they were trying to survive on, and, you know, watching that development from homesteads on gives us a heritage that we look to work with each other and to depend on each other. And as you certainly know, the boundaries for the city of Sodatna are so small. We're such a small jurisdiction, and yet we serve such a huge number of people that we absolutely are dependent on working with other people. We have many non-residents who, again, their commercial interest is focused inside of our jurisdiction. And so again, it's just that interplay is very important. And finally, as always, I'm very impressed when I come to meetings like this and I watch the work that's being done. You are giving up of your time and your life and your family to be of service, to help, only because that's what's going on tonight, but I'm going to particularly mention, you know, watching Dennis and his questions, the thoroughness that he is, obviously, he's looked at the material ahead of time, he's thought about it, he has knowledge. He's on this, thankfully, with knowledge so that he can ask good questions. He has good comments, and I'm sure that's so of each of you, but I'm sitting closer to him. Again, I've got to mention him. I wish...
I could kick him, actually.
He also gave me money, but I can't say anything. The other thing that just goes with it, I wish more people came and saw the good, healthy government that we have in this country. This is exactly what we were built on. This is exactly what we were built on and what we believe in. And you hear all kinds of stuff, particularly during elections. This is good, and I thank each of you for what you are doing and the service. Always without the staff, it'd be very difficult to do the good quality of service that you are doing. The staff does a huge amount of work. They are very well-trained, and they're very knowledgeable. It is important and good to have intelligent people who are, again, backing you up so that you have the information. They have the answers to all the questions you have for them. All of that is the way government's supposed to work. And so it's just a pleasure. And just close with, please, if you have not already, be sure, however you're going to do it, but be sure you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. EDNP Director John Zarneski, would you give us a report?
Sure, a very short one. I don't have a lot to report on. We do have a work session immediately after our meeting tonight. Also, a couple of you, and I apologize because I don't know who it is, but there's two seats, two terms are coming up. And so just, yours is one? Well, I encourage you and whoever the other person is to reapply and serve another term. I forgot to look before the meeting as to whose term. Is Sonya says she's up and someone else? But anyway.
Well, you can go, you just got here.
Oh, great, great. And then last, winter came early, so I hope everybody's ready for the snow and is out there enjoying it. Thanks.
Associate Planner, Esther, would you please give us a report?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's do commissioner comments. And Dennis, since you're the star student tonight, you want to start. Sorry, do you want to go first?
I really don't have any additional comments. Well, I had one question. Do we know, since we're streaming this, do we know how many people actually get on Zoom? Jennifer?
I do. It's just Charlene. I have a panel list in front of me. The other thing is people can access our recordings after the fact. So we do publish this online. Those numbers, the clerk's office, I mean, does tell me sometimes that, you know, oh, we've had quite a few people look at it. And whether, sometimes it's just me doing the minutes. But I think there are some issues that people do look at it after the fact. So just know that what you say is still seen and heard even after you're done here. But I'm not sure. It's not real time, obviously, because it can be months later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for putting this together, all the work. You guys do. And appreciate having you here and your words, so thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Carey. Appreciate it. It's been a pleasure to grow up, having you be a mentor to me, partly through my dad, Scott. Thank you.
Wonderful. Yeah, I'm excited that we have a work session tonight because often those are the times when the public comes and feels like an active participant. And it's a little bit more relaxed, even though this is a very relaxed and welcoming space. So I think that, as commissioners, we can always feel free to invite anyone and everyone to come to these work sessions and help us think about the future of our city. That's why I sit on this commission, is that we get to help plan the future of the city and learn as we go. The ordinances don't always line up with the vision that we set. So that's the challenge, is figuring out how to have those be in balance. So the next time we have a work session, I encourage us all to, to... Oh, and Charlene, I'm so sorry, Charlene. I skipped in front of you. The only other comment that I have is for the fieldhouse. If you know of, then I'm sure that it will be publicized. But is there a public input meeting? I know the design is quote-unquote finalized, but perhaps will there be any other public opportunities for input on design or input on needs? I'm sure there will be. Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, that's very exciting. All right. Charlene, do you have any comments?
No, no comment, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, well, with that, our meeting is officially adjourned. The next regular meeting of the Saldana Planning and Zoning Commission will be held on December 7, 5:30, here in the council chambers or on Zoom. And we hope to see everybody there.
So this is a continuation of sorts of a work session that we had back in, I think it was February, and then a topic that has continued in our discussions for some time. And most notably, at our last meeting with the approval of the storage unit, there were a number of comments from commissioners about this previous work, about, you know, how to move things forward. And so what we've done is put together a little bit of a review of what we talked about back in February. And so it's an opportunity to review, and then it's also an opportunity for you to give staff some direction on a couple of questions that we've got. So let me see if I can get this, get this going here. There we go. Okay. So, speaking of the February 2 meeting and our work session, we took a look at the boundaries of a potential zoning district and essentially tried to identify the commercial core. And it ended up, and let me just fast-forward to it, looking something like that, basically gateway to gateway. So Whistle Hill all the way past the bridge into the city limits. And that incorporates a portion of the commercial district. It also incorporates our riverfront redevelopment planning area, which is about 85 acres. And so, and I'll share with you, as we go on, we asked our consultant to share their feedback. We shared this presentation with them as well and asked for their comments and feedback. When we met back in February, we looked at existing uses and trends. We talked about our goals and plans for the city. And then we actually did a whiteboard exercise where you identified things we want to encourage, discourage, or some uses that maybe be allowed with a conditional use permit. And map again. And let me go back to that map. So it's likely that this will be refined as we roll forward. One thing I noticed today, looking at it, and I don't know if you can see my cursor up there, but up near Addy Camp, we've got this area of a line going across there. That represents the commercial district as it's currently drawn. And that, the way it's drawn splits lots into, as you know, and we end up with these split-zone parcels. So it's likely that we would recommend some other line that would follow parcel lines rather than this arbitrary line that follows the curve of the highway. So just a heads-up there that, you know, as we roll forward, this may be modified. I wanted to share, again, with you, the goals from our different documents with regard to the downtown. And I'll just, I'll let you read through them. I'm not going to read through them. But they're similar. We've got the goals from Options and Opportunities, which is the document that explored the riverfront development concept and shared with landowners what our downtown potentially could look like. We also, in our February meeting, explored the downtown improvement plan and the goals that were stated there. Yeah, I think, right, the standards would implement your goals. They'd be the... Yeah, and the reason, well, not standards, but hopefully it guides the development of our standards and provides us, and that's why we share them, because this is what we've all said, this is what we're going to do in these different documents. And this is from our comp plan in Vision 2030. So it should guide our ordinances, it should guide our actions and our policies. So those were the goals that we shared back in February and that we, you know, obviously, I think that are important enough that I wanted to share them with you again. And the other thing I wanted to share with you are just a quick review of some of the things that we looked at when we were looking at this commercial district. So if you think back to the map that I just showed you, these are the uses within that area. And as you can see, it's a pretty even mix and what appears to be a fairly good balance. There's nothing really dominant. And the question I think we had for you back then is, you know, is this the pie that we want in the future? Or is there some other type of mix? But you can see it's a pretty good mix of retail, residential, offices, eating and drinking, finances, and so on. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I remember, was it the, was it a different? Maybe it was like the downtown overall that we looked at, where automobile was like a giant chunk?
Well, I think you could also buy acreage.
Oh, yeah.
So if you do it by acreage, then the automobile is a lot bigger, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, a number of uses rather than the acreage, right. Yeah, and this is just, again, another way to look at land uses within the commercial district. So these are permitted principal uses that are currently present in our commercial district study area. And you can see retail is the big one. There's 57 different uses. There's 43 offices and public service-type uses. Eating and drinking is the other big one. Sure.
Or should, does that represent land that's, has a future and intended use where it's already owned by somebody and they plan to do something with it? Or is it vacant where it's available for somebody coming by or developing it?
Both. So currently vacant, whether the landowner has a plan for it or not. If it was undeveloped at the time, it was listed here as a vacant use or no use. And that's not always accurate. You know, some people want to have a parcel full of trees that they can go walk around and enjoy. And to them, it's not vacant at all. So, but for our purposes, yeah, if it was undeveloped, didn't have a structure, it was listed as vacant, yep.
Is there a percentage between, you know, the vacant that is available for potential purchase, like a business that wants to come by land and develop theirs? So that versus somebody who already owns it, decides to own it as trees or develop something in the future?
We didn't go into that level of detail to try to determine what was currently listed versus what's not. So it's, like I say, it's both. Okay. So we looked at principal uses that were present in the study area. And then, in this case, we also talked about what uses were not present in the study area, in that mapped area. And there's a number of different uses, everything from assemblies in concert halls to daycares, schools, theaters, and wholesale sales, a number of uses. And we bring this up because within the commercial zoning district, there is a long list, and I don't know if you remember this, but there's a long list of uses that are allowed within this district and conditional uses. And so there's quite a few that are allowed but have never been developed. Now, this, again, only pertains to that study area. For example, you see churches. There are churches in our commercial district and other parts of the city. Same thing with self-storage, as we know. So, again, only applies to the study area. Yeah.
And I don't know if it's something, obviously, your numbers were reflecting on just law numbers compared to foreplay. Do you have any sense of how much of the land itself in the area is actually available? I want to think, you think of how much surface is used by roads, language, most things until that, which would be part of looking at our city would be to maybe do some comparison, pick it up with the common size to see what percent of the actual raw land is available to be used compared to what percent of the raw land is obliged to be used. Do you have any sense, obviously, when we're talking, the road is sort of a major geographic statement there, so I have to assume that we have a significant amount of square footage to dedicate the roads to language.
You're absolutely right. Roads are big. And I've seen studies in other communities where they have mapped out their roads and used that as a way to share, you know, how much of the community is in different types of uses. And with roads or transportation being one of them, it would be an interesting exercise for the city. We've got, I would, you know, a good amount of roads. And we've got state and we've got city roads. And I'd be curious what that proportion looks like, too.
Because that 85 acres was a study area, and that includes roads?
Well, 85 acres is the area for the riverfront redevelopment. Right, yeah. This area is much bigger. This is probably a couple hundred acres.
Does the riverfront redevelopment, 85 acres include...?
It does, yes, yep.
Does real life on the DC out, again, I mean, what's going on in terms of by law? Do you like to care? Do they affect the overall use of that area? I don't think you mean acres.
Yes, I believe so. So if homestead gets extended, I think it'll become a very popular cut-through, you know, way to reach a signalized intersection without having to go through Fred Myers. And so I think it'll become very valuable to the community in particular. I'm sure the locals will learn about it quickly and use that as a... And that, yeah, so I guess the other, the other, right, yes. The other thing I would say is, you know, the city bought a parcel of land to allow for a right-of-way to be dedicated along it. And it does diminish the size of that parcel and what's available for other uses. The parcel will still be adequate. In fact, it could even be subdivided further for future uses.
That 17% that was undeveloped.
Oh, yeah. Yes, so that 17% was everything within that mapped area, which is all the commercial zoning district. So just to go a little further, the city park is not considered vacant. It's a park use. It's not a vacant use. It's a park use. But we did create a map in that previous presentation back in February that actually showed the vacant lands. And I did not include it this time. But it's something that we can look at again in the future. And actually, one of the questions I'll have for you later is how to share this information with the council. And so some of those things, like that map of vacant land, might be something that we add back in.
Is that in comparison to the orange book and strip? So does it identify like the green is vacant?
Yes, it would. The map that we created had that outline of that, you know, the orange blob, and then the vacant parcels identified within it. And I think we had probably the... And I think we had probably the total acreage as well and number of parcels, if I'm not mistaken. Oh. Yeah, let's, let's save that for after, let's get through this, yeah. And then, and then, yeah, otherwise I'll, I'll get messed up on the computer. So we asked if we did create a new commercial zoning district, what, again, uses should we encourage and include? And we conducted our whiteboard exercise. And these are the uses that were suggested that we encourage, that we include. And if you remember, the, the commercial zoning district has what's called permitted principal uses. Those are, are uses that are allowed with a site plan and an administrative permit. And then there's conditional uses, which are uses that require planning commission approval. And then there's, if a use is not listed, it's, it's not allowed. It's a prohibited use. So what you have in front of you right now are those principal uses, uses that you felt would be satisfactory to go through the city process and receive an administrative permit and be, be approved in that method. So our current commercial district includes 28 permitted principal uses. We've gone from 28 to 12 here. And so, and I call that to your attention because that's significant, you know, that's, it's, you know, almost two-thirds of, of the district being condensed. And that was one of the comments that our, our consultant said, you know, you're narrowing it. They felt, they liked it essentially. They said, "Look, you know, yeah, you guys are on the right track. This is great. But be aware that you're going from here to here and you'll be creating non-conformities." And it, you know, and the other thing I think I brought up was that with this process that we have going on now with the riverfront redevelopment, it's entirely possible and likely that roughly a year to two years from now, after that process is concluded, they'll have recommendations for further modifications to the zoning district and the uses that would be appropriate. So if we do something now, it's likely that we do something still a year or a year and a half from now as well. I just want to put that out there. And then these are the recommendations to allow with a conditional use permit. And here, too, we reduced it. We currently have 13 different conditional uses listed in our code that you guys can approve here at the, at the commission level, and it's gone down to these eight. So overall, if you look at the principal and conditional uses, there are 21 fewer uses that would be allowed within that core zoning district, core commercial district. Sure. Occasionally, there's an odd use that comes up. But honestly, no. I mean, I can't recall someone saying, "I want to develop something in the commercial district," where our code didn't allow it. Our code is so permissive. It's, it's, yeah, it's really, it's unbelievable, the, the things that can be constructed. And that's why I showed that list of things that were allowed but never developed. There's, there's quite a few of them. And then here's, this is two different slides for uses to avoid or uses to discourage. These were the roughly 21 odd uses that we said maybe aren't appropriate for the downtown commercial. And I'll point out here a couple of things that were brought up by our consultant. He mentioned two uses, animal care and daycare centers, as he questioned whether those should be on this list. And one is with regard to daycares and animal cares, they're, they're traffic generators. They're, they're good as far as bringing people to your, your downtown, especially The other thing about daycares is if we're encouraging downtown housing, it makes sense to have nearby daycare as well. And so our consultant suggested, you know, if nothing else, maybe if they're not principal use, they could be conditional. Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And then that, that list continues to, to this list. No, as I mentioned, overall, they felt that what's being proposed is in line with the direction that we've all stated, that we want the, you know, the riverfront and our downtown to develop. It, it meets, you know, I shared with them our goals that I shared with you guys. And I said, "Yeah, no, it's, it's right in line with that." And it, so they, they were happy with it. And just had those couple of comments on those two uses. Yeah, they didn't mention schools, but schools typically are institutional district, right, rather than in the commercial district. So all of our, our schools currently are zoned institutional. And if the need would arise, they likely would request a rezon to institutional from whatever it currently is. Same thing with the future fire station. Right now, the fire station where they're proposing it is in the commercial zoning district. What they'll do is make a request to you guys to rezone it to institutional so the fire station can go in. I didn't see, should a hand pop up there? Okay. Still with us, Charlene?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks, just checking in. We heard a bell go off, so we weren't sure if that was just me or who knows what.
Well, I'm on mute, so, well, I had just a bell go off right now, but I'm on mute, so I don't know why.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Let's see. So, so again, these are the, the uses that were discouraged. Oh, and I'll bring up, I've added some slides here to talk about some... Oh, this is, sorry, this is the map with a overlay of the, the zoning district. It's not where I thought I was going.
It's nice, great colors.
Okay. And if we actually develop a new zoning district, we need to develop code language for the intent of the district. And this was my attempt at doing that. So the commercial core district is intended to provide a core area that is visually pleasing and that emphasizes a mix of compatible uses that encourage a pedestrian environment, connectivity, increased density, and activity within its boundaries. The principal objectives of this CC designation are to strengthen the role of this area as a unique retail, tourism, entertainment, business, and cultural hub for the region and to accommodate mixed use residential development. So what I'm hoping is that, this is definitely more specific than most of our other intent language in our codes. What, what my goal was, was to provide you with an intent statement that you could use when you are considering conditional use permits and making decisions about whether a permit should be issued or not. So this is something that I'm hoping that you guys can rely on and say, "Yeah, this provides me the guidance to know whether this proposed use fits within this district or not." So that, that's something that is certainly open for discussion and comments now or later. It's something, you know, I can also send, send you a copy of this presentation if you guys would like to do that. Okay. Let me make a note to do that. And then the other thing I, I really wanted to share with you, and that's the remaining couple of slides are on non-conformities. So anytime you change zoning districts, you're going to create non-conformities. So as, as I mentioned earlier, there's 22 fewer uses as proposed. Not all of them are, are present, some are. But what, based on a count that I did today, I went through each of the uses that's being removed. And then I, I looked within that district to see if I could find existing uses that would become non-conforming if, if we do remove them. And so I found 20 non-residential type, non-conforming uses. And I'll go through some of those in more detail. And then I found 12 residential, non-conforming uses. So there's 12 individual lots or properties with residential uses that would also be non-conforming. And I'll go through what, what that means as well. But first, here's some examples or the non-conforming use categories where I found them all. So there were, one of the things that we talked about was discouraging certain types of automotive type uses, whether it's fueling. Fueling, we said, was okay, but auto sales, we said, no. Car washes, said no. And so automobile detailing, repair, rental, car sale, car wash, there's a number of different uses within the district that will be non-conforming. Same thing with, there's a single food and storage locker. There's a couple light industry uses. There's two, two parking lots. One is the, the old gravel pit, you know, I mean, sorry, Davis Block. It's the city parking lot. And then the other parking lot will soon be the Aspen parking lot, which the, the city will have a lease on. Those will also become non-conforming. Marijuana establishments. And I can't for the life of me remember whether we talked about marijuana at our meeting as, as being one of the uses. I didn't think so. It is a retail use, but we have it listed as a separate use within the commercial district because there's a separate set of standards for marijuana. And so that would be something, we currently have a couple marijuana uses within the district. And actually, we've got one coming, one existing, and then one outside in the other part of the, the commercial district. So that's something that we, we need some feedback on as well, whether marijuana should be a marijuana retail or marijuana manufacturing, whether they should be allowable uses or conditional uses within this district. Campgrounds, including RV campgrounds. So there's a couple RV campgrounds that would become non-conforming. There's, as I mentioned, dwellings. And there are a couple of healthcare institutions. So that would be the Riverside assisted living. And then warehousing. And the, the only warehousing I can think of is, it used to be the Wonder Bread building. And now it's, I think, Regal Foods next to the Blazey Mall.
Does the old ACS building fall in that category?
It, it does not. The ACS building is outside the area. But yeah, that would be another example of warehousing. And so here's... Yeah, so that area, and I, I can go back to the map here. Right, it's, it's, oops, here we go. Yep. That was excluded. It's, it's possible. I mean, it certainly is. So there's a, a reason, though, that in part why it was excluded. So this area right here is developing as public service. So right now CES, Solatna, police station, soon to be the new CES at the old Foster's construction. You've got, then you've got the old ACS and you've got... So anyway, we kept that, I think it's Warehouse or Wilson, I can't remember, Wilson, as the dividing line, just because that uses are so distinctly different on, on that side. But the map is, is fair game as well. You know, ultimately, when we talk about moving things forward, you know, you'll have to make a, you know, make a decision on whether the map is accurate or not, whether it should be expanded or restricted or, or something altogether different. And then, so we, the previous slide looked at, these are the different classes of non-conformities. Here are the specific lists of businesses that would become non-conforming uses. So River and Sea Marine actually falls under the, the automobile. It's automobile and boat. And so River, CNM Muffler, lots of auto places, as I mentioned. The brewery is considered manufacturing or light industry, and so it would become non-conforming. I don't know if Woodland Taxidermy is still in business or not, but the, I included it. Probably isn't. I think it's actually, the building is probably vacant, but maybe somebody else knows. The new Tanner Fish Processing would become also non-conforming. It also qualifies as light industry. The city parking lots I mentioned, the marijuana businesses, the two RV parks, the dwellings I mentioned, and then the other two, the Riverside assisted living and Wonder Bread buildings. So those are the ones that I identified just by going through the, the map today. And again, this is, this is based on what we discussed back in February. So non-conforming uses can be tricky, and, and so I wanted to share with you a little bit of background on what, what it, what it really means. And we regulate non-conforming uses in a separate section of code. And currently in the commercial district, there's also a separate section for non-conforming residential structures that were affected by an ordinance that was adopted about eight years ago when the, if you remember right, now I can't think of the name of the business, but it became the Buchholz House.
Night Watch.
The Night Watch, thank you. The Night Watch, right, went from being commercial to residential. And that caused a reaction by the council to adopt some more strict guidelines. So at that time, you could build a residential structure as a permitted principal use in the city, and they shifted it basically to a conditional use and, and placed some additional restrictions on it, like you had to have the commercial landscaping if, if you're going to build in a commercial district. Even though you've got a residential use, you need to have a commercial landscaping. So those are the two sections of code that deal with non-conforming uses. The intent of the section, as it's stated, is that non-conformity shall not be enlarged upon, expanded, nor extended. And a non-conforming use means a use or structure or land or of a structure and land in combination lawfully existing at the time the ordinance became effective, which is non-conformity with the use is permitted in the zone which it exists. So what that's saying is the non-conforming use is something that when it was built, it was legal under the code, but because of the code change, now it's no longer conforming. It's, it becomes legally non-conforming. How will non-conforming uses be treated? These are the general standards in our code. And as I mentioned, the, the intent of, of the section also spelled this out where it said no expansion, extension, or enlargement. So again, they can continue, but they can't be expanded or enlarged upon. Prior lawful existence, and as I just stated, where land uses existed in a district prior to the effective date of the code, they are allowed to continue as legal non-conforming uses. No, the, ownership does not affect, does not affect the non-conforming use status. So ownership, basically, nothing in the section prevents change in tenancy or management of an existing... So that can change at any point, and it doesn't affect the status of the non-conforming use structure or parcel. Expansion, enlargement, or extension of a non-conforming use that could be permitted as a conditional use shall be made only upon approval of a conditional use permit. So there are a few instances, for example, residential in the residential section, where it says you can expand a non-conforming residential structure if you apply for a conditional use permit and get the blessing. So this just repeats that, that section of code. So this just repeats that, that section of code. Well, that's only for expansion, if somebody wanted to add on to their nonconforming. And so you wouldn't necessarily be able to bring them into compliance. You wouldn't grant them the ability to expand, but they could continue. Next slide. I guess, it might be, it might be two slides off, my apologies. But most common, the nonconforming use, it goes, you know, becomes defunct. It's, it takes time, unfortunately. A lot of the uses, it just, the use becomes past its prime. And we've got some of those uses in our downtown that have been here for a long time and are, you know, ripe for redevelopment. And that's, that's what happens, is they get torn down, rebuilt. You know, the whole Mullen homestead, essentially, you know, granted, that wasn't nonconforming. It was residential use, but it was converted to commercial use. And we've got many examples of that in our downtown where older uses... Another one that you guys might be familiar with, and I think I mentioned it, was this Uncle Herb marijuana business, which will be going in at the, what's the name of that place? Yeah, Art C Junk in that, that area next to the Maverick. There's all those older buildings. They are gonna move one of those buildings or demolish one of those buildings and build a new structure. So in that case, again, an older use, whether it's nonconforming or not, disappears from the landscape and a conforming use comes in. Under construction here, this basically states that if you get your permits and the code changes, while you've got your permit but you haven't built yet, you're still allowed to develop your use, even if you change, you know, and say that it's no longer conforming, that it's not allowed. As long as you've got your entitlement, you've got your permit and it was granted, you're allowed to build it. Repairs and maintenance. This is a section here that is very difficult to enforce and deal with. This is, this is the most common way, or the most common way that codes deal with nonconformities as far as trying to limit their existence long-term. And they do that by limiting the amount of repairs that can happen in that nonconforming structure over time. So our code says that over 12 months of time, you cannot exceed 10% of the current replacement value on repairs. So as you can imagine, we don't have a good handle on what's going on inside all of these buildings. We don't know, unless somebody applies for a building permit. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But we don't know how often that's happening over the course of time. We also don't know the current, we have to figure out the current value. We have to figure out what, how much money they put into it, and then try to track that. And it's virtually impossible. So it's not an effective way to deal with nonconformities as far as if the goal is really trying to get rid of them, other than letting, you know, Father Time deal with it. And then there's some additional language specifically for nonconforming uses. Because, so there's nonconforming uses, there's nonconforming structures, and there's nonconforming parcels. We have a section that deals just with nonconforming uses, and those two standards are listed here. Should it be, a use be discontinued, destroyed, or abandoned for a period of one year? It can't be used as that nonconforming use anymore. So essentially, if a business goes out of business and it's a nonconforming use, and it sits vacant for a year, it would not be able to be rebuilt, or would not be able to continue as that use. It is. Yes. You could, you could, you could make that recommendation. But one year is, one year is very common, yeah. It is, yeah. And I think it would be up to the council, if there was some type of major earthquake, for example, that they would put this on hold and, and, you know, that they would just seek some, you know, remedy to this, where this gets pulled for two years, or whatever is necessary. But, you know, that's available to us in those kinds of instances. Right? Oh, absolutely. Yeah, by the time you deal with your insurance company alone, it's probably gonna be a year. So change of ownership won't affect a nonconforming use. So if you own a nonconforming marijuana business and you sell it, that new owner can continue that use. So ownership has no effect. And again, as it's stated in the other sections, nonconforming uses shall be enlarged, increased, or extended. Right, right. That's it. Yeah, well, it's included in several slides. So there's the, there's the, you know, the maintenance thing, right? Which should discourage, if, if we could actually enforce that, that would discourage uses from continuing as nonconformities. There's, there's, there's no way. The other is, this, this one, a disaster, or someone, the business goes out of business, is the example I used. That's another way that it happens, is nobody, nobody wants to pick it up, and then it becomes nonconforming. Those are, yeah, those are the two main ones. And then just the passage of time. It's, you know, that you get to a point in the redevelopment of certain areas, and the, you know, there's a market that's created for that, or through the, through the actions of the city. So, so for example, if the city were trying to redevelop an area and we extend sewer and water to it, that certainly would provide that impetus to redevelop, because we've got sewer and water now where we didn't have it before. So there's different ways to encourage and discourage redevelopment. Our main tool though, as a city, is that provision of services. There's, in many communities, taxes are a way to encourage it. The city's not, City of Solatna is not in the position to offer any kind of tax incentive, because our mill rate is so low, that it wouldn't make sense to offer 50 bucks on every $100,000 of value. You know, it wouldn't be worth a person filling out the paperwork to get a $150 tax credit. You know, that's not gonna encourage too many people to redevelop. And so we have to be thankful that we've got the lowest property taxes on one hand, but also it does take away a tool that many other communities use for encouraging economic development. So let me go back, because I wanna see if I left myself some notes here. There were a couple things I wanted to share with you. There it is. So I, there's, there's, well, first, I will get this to you, so you can review it at your own leisure. And then if you have comments and questions, you can shoot them to me. But there's two ways for this to go forward that the Planning Commission has. You know, one is, like we typically do, is a resolution is developed, and then that resolution is forwarded on to council with your recommendations. That's the typical way. The alternate way that we could do this is, and the reason I bring this up is because, as we've discussed, there's a lot of material here to digest. And so the second option would be to do a joint work session with council, where we go over the same types of material that we went over here in planning and zoning, and bring them up to speed with what's happening in our downtown, our goals and our planning documents, what's currently happening within the district, and then some of the reasons behind these proposed changes. And at that point, then either the council could introduce an ordinance on their own, or Planning and Zoning could introduce a resolution and get it to, to the council. So those, those are the two ways. And I was curious whether you guys had any feelings, one way or the other, as to how you wanna proceed on this. I don't think... Okay, thank you. It is, yep. It's just, yeah, and we could, we can do both. We can, if you want, you can have a resolution and request a joint work session.
If somebody's talking, I can't hear anything.
Sorry about that, Charlene. I think the resolution makes sense, it just, it just heightens the awareness. And then a joint work session, ask for the joint work session to say, is this the direction that you want us to go? And, and what are some of the visioning things? I mean, it's like, I mean, what I've been thinking about is, so can you identify properties that are not commercial that you should, but, but I think you get into trouble when you rezone something commercial and assume, although our taxes are low, that does tend to, somebody says, I wanna zone commercial when I'm ready, not when the city is ready.
Right.
I have a quick question. Is there a limit to how many marijuana establishments can be in city limits?
There isn't a number, but what we have are buffers that are around our schools, around our parks, around daycares, around institutions, like the Freedom House, for example. So there's those types of buffers. And when you, when you put the buffers on a map, you'll see that the area available for marijuana businesses is very restricted within the city. There's only a handful of places where they could potentially develop. And then, you know, they have to go through the, you know, if there's a hole in the donut where they can develop, the land may already be in use by someone else for another use. So, so anyway, while there isn't a number, there is the buffers that restrict the actual development of those businesses.
Because there's one, correct me if I'm wrong, by Papa Murphy's. And then you said there's gonna be another one going in by the Maverick?
Correct.
So that's like two with, you know, they're pretty close proximity to each other. I didn't know, you know, how close they could all be. It just seems like a lot. It's just my opinion. I just don't think we should have all these marijuana businesses break down the main street as people travel through. But that's my opinion.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because that actually, it reminded me of, one other thing that our consultant mentioned, Charlene, and your comment about access in our main highway. One of the things that they talked about when they were looking at the uses, and they, again, said, you know, this, we may have recommendations for you a year from now that are more refined. And so what they suggested is that there may be a very different use that occurs and that is appropriate on the Sterling Highway versus adjacent to the river. And so your auto-orienteded businesses may be still appropriate on the Sterling and on the Spur, but less so as, as you identify, you know, these areas that we wanna redevelop. And so anyway, I wanted to share that with you, that they, the auto access orientation as far as uses was something that caught their eye as well. So...
What is the extent of the buffer with the marijuana question? I mean, is it a, so many, so many feet?
It's 500 feet, basically, from all those uses I listed. So it's usually measured from the parcel line of the buffered use, so of the school, for example, to the build, the marijuana building. And so as long as it's more than 500 feet, they're, they're in, I mean, they're okay. There's one exception, and I think it's for churches. I think churches are measured building to building, because when we looked at churches, when we developed the ordinance, if you, there's, a lot of our churches are on big parcels of land. So I think about our Catholic church in particular, that's got a big chunk of land, and that parcel extends many directions. And I think our Lutheran church is also on a fairly decent sized piece of land as well. So that went from building to building, rather than parcel line to building.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of the, of the school that's right behind Kalati Brothers.
The study.
That, that would be pretty close to this Maverick, or the parcel that's there.
It does extend into the parcel. So that buffer extends into the parcel that the marijuana business purchased. The building will be located outside the buffer on that parcel though.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, I mean, this is, this is an important topic. Because, you know, we're talking about this central area that defines who we are as a city, to not only ourselves, but to people who come in and view us, or spend time here. And, you know, I'm glad we have these buffer zones, but I don't know if there's a way we would be able to discourage, you know, multiple marijuana businesses coming out. When we initially talked about this, I had polled several people, a small sample size, but it was interesting that every single person, and I didn't even mention it, every single person said, "We don't want another pot shop." That was always the first thing everybody said, and then said, "Oh, you know, it'd be nice to have, you know, this and that." But it's, the marijuana businesses are in retail, right? Or what's...
Yeah, we, yeah, they're a separate use, as far as our classification within the zoning code.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, yes, we have these buffer zones, but is there a way to limit how much, discourage additional marijuana shops coming in? Because, yeah, we have them on this main strip, but we also have them, if you go on the Spur Highway, we have them all over, so. I'm not trying to nitpick here against them.
Sir, there's, I mean, what we're doing today by looking at this core, core part of our commercial district, certainly, you know, your recommendation on whether they should be allowed within the district as a principal use, as they currently are, as a, as a conditional use, which would require them coming to you, or not allowed at all. Those are the three options that you've got in front of you. And so what I would suggest is that if, if the commission wants to do both, sponsor a resolution and have a joint work session, what I would do is, I would bring back to you at your next meeting, a draft ordinance for you to review and modify and make your own. And it would base, be based on what we saw today. And so if there's, if there's changes that you wanna make, like I said, marijuana currently is not on the list. If you wanna keep it that way, then you don't have to say a word, because that's how it'll show up. And then if there's other uses, we talked about... And then, if there's other uses, we talked about daycare and, and animal hospitals. You know, if you want to switch them from being, I can't remember, not allowed to conditionally allowed or permitted principle, you can make those changes.
Yeah, and I think, Mark, to your point, I mean, if, if, if you're trying to encourage the whole community, and there certainly are other places that those businesses can occupy, as they are now, that, you know, maybe in that, in that particular space, it's, it's not an appropriate use.
And then, this body often sees, like, our main job is approving or denying conditional use, permit applications, and one of our main purposes, but often it's like, we don't really feel like we have the authority to deny an applicant who meets all of the standards. And so, part of it is like, if we put marijuana in, or, you know, whatever, we put in these lists of conditional uses, how do we then create a process for us to feel like we can reasonably deny something?
Yeah, I think, I think, I mean, it'd be the council that would, that would make that decision in the ordinance, that our, it would be our recommendation that in the, in the commercial zone, to redevelop this specifically tract of property, which we're trying to accomplish certain goals, that we don't see that as a compatible use and it's not permitted. Obviously, if somebody gets under the wire before all the ordinance gets passed, well then, they're grandfathered in, that's how it works. But otherwise, you're discouraging and saying, you know, no one else can do it, you know?
But I wasn't talking about the uses that we would discourage. I was talking about the conditional uses and how, how then we deal with them as they come and potentially deny them if they're in that category.
That's, that's why I brought up this, this slide that's in front of you, the intent, because I know you struggle with, with that currently. And we've got set standards for conditional uses, and you do have some wiggle room within those standards, but you have to base it on something. And it's usually based on the intent of, of the code. And without a well-written intent, it's difficult to make the connection to say, "Yeah, this is what was intended for this district, and what you're proposing doesn't meet it." And so, this in particular becomes very important, this intent section, that it be accurate, that it, that it reflects what we're trying to accomplish within the zoning district, so that when you do get those conditional uses, it makes it a little bit easier to determine whether it, if it backfits within the district.
Could there, this, Charlene, could there be a buffer of they have to be, you know, more than a mile within each other?
There could be, yes.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, no, there, yeah.
They have to be a mile apart.
It could be, you could have that. Or as I think you, you mentioned, is, you know, you can just have a set number of, of uses within the city. We obviously want to run those all through our attorney to make sure that we're not getting into trouble going those, that direction. But, yeah, there, there's different ways to, to limit the number of uses.
Just in terms of your intent, the one word I was unsure of from your legal meaning, and that would be your use of the word "activity" there. The other things that could kind of make sense in terms of what they were, but then we got that last one, "and activity." Is there a particular legal definition for what you're looking for there?
There isn't. So, that word was specifically chosen because the buzzword for downtown redevelopment and getting people into a downtown is to make it active, to activate a downtown, so that people not only are going there to shop and to eat dinner, but they're actually living there as well. So I wanted to specifically include the word "activity", that, that we want our downtown to be active. We want to encourage activity, whether that's through the use of our parks, through the use of, of, or I should say, through encouraging different uses. So that's what's behind "activity."
And the reason I particularly bring it up, and I thought you might say what you said, there are times in the summer where I think we have too much activity, where simply as much as possible, I'm not sure is always the best for our intent. And so that, that the choice of that word, and I certainly understand, particularly in a commercial area, you want activity, you want people using it. But it would seem to me that we're uniquely, as a tourist center, there are times when it just, there's too much.
That's an interesting comment, and I want to share that with our consultant. You know, because good design can, I think, alleviate some of those issues of crowds and, and parking and just masses. And so, I'll, and are you speaking like, in particular of events like at the, at the park? Those, or, or just like the volume of traffic going through?
Well, I, I do it on both, but I particularly mentioned, we have more than what we can safely handle. And so that, it would seem to me somewhere within that list of our intent should be that what we are encouraging is going on safely. And I just mentioned crossing the street to get over to the park at times. To simply want activity, which sounds good maybe commercially, but I'm going to tell you, it's dangerous. I worry about our kids. And so, somewhere within our intent, I have a concern to be sure that it's safe. And that's where the word "activity" seems to be unlimited. And I'm not sure that's healthy.
Yeah, no, that's an interesting point.
If you just have to go to Safeway at 10 o'clock at night.
That's, you know, actually, I was thinking the similar thing with regard to our seasons. You know, July, yeah, we're, we're too active. Right now, we, we got room. So I think one of our, and this is one of the things that we shared with our consultant with regard to the Riverside redevelopment concept, is we, we want to have a more of a balance, something that people are attracted to year-round rather than just in July, that, that it becomes a place where a business can survive 12 months of the year and not just three months.
I think, well, I think one of the first ones was reduce, potentially reduce speed. And that would really help things be more safe, especially as you have more and more pedestrians crossing that main, main drag. And the intent, the other thing I thought of was like visually pleasing, because it's so arbitrary, potentially including like highlighting the commercial cores proximity to the river with design elements that do that. I don't know if you, you know, whether it's like the natural, you, you never know that we're a river city, but we're starting to become, you know, like those gateway signs are starting to allude to the fact that we're a river city. I think they're down, riverfront downtown redevelopment corridor, we're gonna, I can see that in the future, you know, over time, it will be more and more clear that we're a river city. And so, if there's ways that we can encourage that in this intent document.
Yeah, if you have, if you have some specific language.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to think of some.
That would be great, because I'm not sure, I, I wrote down, yeah, something here, but I'm not sure I can capture what you're thinking, but I, I think I get it.
And I don't even know what's, what's appropriate. You know, you, you know better as a planner what's appropriate in an intent document. But if this is truly the thing that we're going to be able to come back to and point to, to, to figure out whether or not a, a conditional use goes forward or not, I would like it to have something like that in there.
Yeah, yeah, and there's, there's different ways to, to write these intent statements as well. I've, I've seen a, a number of different codes do it different ways. And, and this is, this is consistent with how we do it within the Sodatna Code. But another version that I've seen is, it has a, a broad statement about what they're trying to accomplish, but then it says, you know, "This will be accomplished by A, B, C, and D, and E", which offer more specificity as far as what is, what is to occur within the district.
And how long do you think this, like, short-term process will take? Only, only, I'm only saying that because we talked about doing a stopgap measure in the, in the very near term.
And that's...
For some of the most egregious, like, things that are currently like principal uses that we actually want to be in the non-per, absolutely non-permitted uses.
And, and I guess I would consider this to be the, the stopgap. This is a one step, as I mentioned, we'll, we'll have another step after the riverfront redevelopment project is done with new... So it'll be an opportunity to refine. So, yeah, so it, it's going to be one of those questions, yeah, how mu, how far to go?
Right, oh yeah. To me, it's like, just make sure we get self-storage out of there, and then we'll revisit this in a year.
Yeah, right, so, and, and, you know...
That's the growth industry in our, it is.
There's lots of room besides the downtown corridor to do that. Okay, no, that's helpful. The other thing, the other question I had was, how to make, you know, non-conforming uses conform maybe faster than just like grandfather time? Because the other two processes you listed, we didn't actually have the ability to enforce. And that to me seems, yeah, it's like, can we add a clause that when they transfer ownership? Is that a thing that's common practice for other communities? Or I, I'd like to know what the options are there.
Right. And that might be something that we take up, maybe not at this short-term, but in the long-term, that we, we spend some time really researching and seeing what, what's possible and what works in other communities that we could adopt and make work for us. So you're talking about like the, how, the percent of how much they could expand or not expand? Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and that could be, that could be something we write in. Is it a certain percentage of the land mass or a certain number of the businesses can be this?
Kind of like we did with the primary dwellings on the, on the, is where I was thinking.
Okay.
But it's tricky, it's just like, how do you, if they're grandfathered in or if they already exist, then how do you get them to change if they don't ever have to change unless, actually, they just don't ever have to change? Until, until, yeah. I, I think about it with the auto sales and auto uses right now. It's like, you know, there's a lot, I, I can see them just staying kind of forever, because it's prime real estate, and is that what we want or not? And it's up for debate, but... The only other thing that I think should be included in our, as a principal use, would be light industry and small-scale manufacturing. I think that's a pretty common practice nowadays, is like, that down, small towns are looking to bring that back in. So whether that's small woodworking shop or a small metal shop that is almost like a tourist destination and, and brings in some industry, you're making things, you know, that are unique to the area. I think that's a critical thing to include in the, in the principal uses for downtown.
Yeah, there's a, they call it, I think, maker crafts.
Yeah.
And, and so, it's possible, and we've done this in other times, within these classifications, broken them out where some elements of light industry are principal uses, and other elements of light industry are conditional, and some are not allowed. So you'll, yeah, certainly have that ability to move things around and make things work for you.
Just again, this is very good. I'm really pleased I got November and December to get to be there.
We're the cool kids.
But I want to give you a, a project, because it's going to be an easy one.
I like easy ones.
And that's the issue of the snow berm on commercial places. You know, the snow is stacked such that you just take a risk. You get out on the road at times. And again, yeah, they, they build mountains right next to the road. And so again, I want something easy, that being again, just, but in truth, I see it's a major safety issue. Always worrying for our kid, but for everyone. I'm an older kid now, I'm an elder kid. But I see that's a very difficult thing. Good snow, and again, everyone's got to plow it up, because you got to open up the parking area, and they put it right to the edge. And getting out of that business, that commercial whatever, when you got the new mountain here, it's very difficult. I don't know if it scares everyone, I don't know. And that's where again, the geniuses, again, the young people and the geniuses. But that's an area I would like to see us spend some cogitating on, to see what we could do to help make it a little bit safer.
Yeah, that's, that...
Get them to drive slower when they go through town.
Yeah. Yeah, it's difficult. It's, I know the, the property owners will tell you they got nowhere to push snow, and, and what, what that comes down to then is a removal, and, and that gets expensive. So it's, it's a tough one, and I... Sympathize with them as far as, you know, that, that issue goes. We just got to get to snow less.
You're going to print up your sign and be out in front of that snow berm? Please move this.
I'm generous, you're going to, at 10 or 11 o'clock at night, I can get out and print out.
Well, that's all I've, I've got for you guys. And, and so, like I said, we'll prepare a resolution for you at your next meeting and have that for your December. That'll be an agenda item, won't be a work session.
It won't be a work session. Is that, at that time, I mean, it seems like a fun meeting to invite the public to attend. I mean, all of our meetings are fun meetings, but this one, in particular, where you're kind of reimagining how you want the downtown to look moving forward, that's, that's a fun time to invite people.
Yeah, and I encourage you to look at the slides after I send them to you. If you have additional comments on the maps, on the, the intent, on any of the uses that are listed and where they belong, you know, that'll be perfect for our next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And so, there won't be a work session next time?
No.
Probably not, okay. Will there be, um, do you envision, gosh, it's already, next year already, December, are there any other work sessions coming up in the next six months or...
For planning commission?
Yeah.
I don't have anything planned.
Okay. But if we have something that we really want to discuss, we can always ask you.
Absolutely.
Do you want everyone to show up just to say that you're going to ban pot?
Excellent.
You fill the, fill the room.
We want a productive conversation. Maybe it could be, should we ban pot? Question mark.
All right.
Okay.
Either that or, you know, some dog control thing.
Yeah, there we go. I don't know, I, do you think, do you think that a speed limit, like if we reduce it, what is it, 35 to town now? If we reduce it to 25, do you think people would come unhinged?
Only if they got pulled over several times.
I think it would be good. Well, I mean, I, I was on crutches once, and I did, I tried to cross the Sterling Highway to get there, and I was like, huh! You know, like those fun things that make a town unique. What people always say to me, and I never know how to respond, they're always just like, "Oh, it's so ugly." You know, like, "Oh, it looks like West LA," or, or even like that nude tan. You know, it's like, "Oh, it's like a big ugly warehouse building, like, right in downtown." Like, why? And I, and I think about it, I'm...